Good evening, welcome to our October 7th, 2019 regular meeting of the West Orange Board of Education. Mr. Calabano?
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic, which is one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. May I have a motion for consideration of the closed and public meeting minutes of September 23rd?
So moved.
I'll second.
All right. Mr. Calabano?
Mrs. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Triggs Scales?
Yes.
Vice President Mordecai?
Yes.
President Alper?
Yes. I was about to toss it over to our student reports, and I know they're here. They step out for a sec?
They're here.
They're here. I gave them water bottles. We'll get them in a sec. So, I'll just do what I had to say before I send it over back to them. Hopefully, they'll be back. If not, Dr. Cascon can go first. We'll call an audible. Hmm? Okay. Yeah, that's fine. I can just do a... They're on their way? Cool. All right, we'll give them a minute. I want to start with a couple of thank yous real fast. We want to thank the anonymous donor who gave us all these great West Orange water bottles for the whole board and Dr. Cascon and Mr. Calabano. Some of ours are still soaking in some, you know, to get the plastic taste out, but these are great. You know, we mentioned sustainability and helping the environment a good bit up here, and on behalf of all of us, I think it's safe to say that we really appreciate this gesture because, you know, it gets us away from the disposable bottles that we generally use, and it's just one of those little things that people can do to make a difference, you know? The small things really add up. So, thank you to that donor. I also need to talk a little bit about the COPS grant we just received and thank a few people on that front. So, as you may have seen on social media, the district was just awarded just under $300,000 over the next two years from what's called the COPS grant. That's from the Office of Community Oriented Policing Services under the Federal Department of Justice. It's their school violence prevention program. It's not a grant for actual police officers. I was telling somebody about it, and they said, "Oh, we're getting COPS and..." No, 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 it's not. It doesn't handle personnel. It's just, you know, that's what COPS stands for, Community Oriented Policing. It's for physical security needs. It's going to accomplish an awful lot this year and next and go a long way to improving the safety of our buildings. It's a real budgetary saving for the district. We're required to match just one quarter of that total amount, so just $37,500 over each of the next two years, which is already in the budget for this year. So, we're all set. So, quickly, I just need to thank a few people for helping make that possible. Michelle Castellino from the Town Council, she's the council's liaison to the board, and Mrs. Merklinger and I are the board liaisons to the council. So, as soon as I saw the grant come into my email in early February, I sent that over to Michelle because this particular grant, the requirement had been that the municipality needs to apply for it, not the district itself. So, you know, it's just one more example of the way we work together in West Orange and shared services in a great partnership, so I thank Michelle for making that possible. She immediately called in the town's grant-writing firm, Millennium Strategies, and Kathy Kapoor and Nick Petrunkio. Thanks to them for everything they did to get this done. Errol Brudner from Stonegate, whose firm did the security audit and made the recommendations for exactly what we needed to do, was also a big part of this. Thanks to Ms. D'Amendis, who was acting superintendent at the time when this all came up and was more than happy to roll with it, coordinate the meetings, sign off on everything, and run the process from the district end. And thanks to Chief Abbott and Tim Brennan from the Police Department, as well as the other folks from that agency who came to the meetings and helped put all this together. You know, it was a real joint effort across two units of elected government, the Police Department, Stonegate, and Millennium, and I'm grateful to everyone for the hard work that made that possible. And Dr. Cascon, I expect this will be just the first of, hopefully, many happy announcements about grant money that you and I will get to make over the next few years. So, with that, we'll head over for the student liaison report.
Hello, good evening. My name is Darlene Foles. I'm here with Sanai Doni, and we are both the student liaisons for the West Orange High School. We'd first like to begin by continuing on an update from last week, which is that we are continuing to survey the students. We have set up a stand during lunch, and we meet on Mondays to collect feedback and communicate the students' responsibilities, let them know who we are and our roles in the school. We are also in the process of building our website. Once again, we're being very intentional to communicate our abilities and to gather more information about what the student wants. Because we are in the early stages, we are noticing trends about what the students are leaning towards, but it's too soon to report on, and we plan to build up on that in the next meetings.
We also wanted to point out that we're glad to see that the new IDs have been passed out and have been made for grades nine through 11 in the high school. These IDs are meant to coincide with the GPS tracking system with the buses. Seniors will be getting there soon, and we're looking forward to see how, like, this all rolls out with the new bus tracking system. We also wanted to ask about what the capabilities are for this busing system, like, will students be able to track their buses and be able to know, like, what time their buses are going to be arriving? Because similar to, like, the New Jersey Transit system, there's a text alert system, texting alert system, that you can text your bus stop to, and the transit will automatically tell you when the next bus is coming. And so, it might be helpful for students.
In addition to that, we'd also like to report that student council officers and ourselves were actually in attendance to the Essex County Student Government Roundtable last Wednesday. We were able to meet with other Essex County High School student council officers, discuss our school activities and initiatives, debate and discuss ideas relating to community service, policy, and school spirit. We are also proud to report that we were the most diverse school there and were able to contribute new ideas that promote diversity and inclusivity within schools that are less diverse as ours. We were also proud to report that schools like Nutley and Bloomfield are not only mimicking our school program and considering positions like student liaisons at their school, but even following some of our efforts that we suggested.
Lastly, we wanted to add that tomorrow, the student council officers and student liaisons will be attending this Leadership, New Jersey Association of Student Council Fall Businesses Meeting in TCNJ in Trenton. We're going to be taking leadership workshops, and we're also going to be supporting Mr. Moore, principal of the high school, for his Administrator of the Year award nominee, nomination, and to see if he will actually win that. We'll update you on the results after the conference.
Fantastic. All right, thank you, Dr. Cascon. Do you want to talk about the GPS a little bit?
We've made note of the inquiry. I do have a little bit of information about that. I do know that there is an app. It's interesting you asked the question because it's been identified primarily as a parent app, but certainly for, you know, our older high school students, as you become more independent, there's no reason why it should be available to you as well. So, I don't know off the top of my head what the capabilities are of that app, but we have made a note of it and can report back to you at the next meeting.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
I know what we discussed last year when we first were talking about putting the GPS on the buses, when there were some security concerns with that, you know, and I think you can all think of scenarios where it'd be dangerous, not for obviously a student to know when the bus is coming, but maybe, you know, a non-custodial situation, that sort of thing. So, I think that's one of the, you know, things that has, you know, thought through pretty carefully to see if there's a way around that or not, to make sure that, you know, if it is available, that it's controlled. What I think was going to be available was that at least the transportation, they would know where every bus was at every time, which of course is one of the, you know, big drivers behind this when it started. So, all right, thank you. Up next, superintendent report.
Thank you, Mr. Alper. Before I just kind of get into the overall report, just taking care of the business on the agenda, is you have an HIB report. There were three cases that were moved forward. Two were not confirmed, one was confirmed. I would just like to advise that I have reviewed the case files and do concur with the recommendations of the anti-bullying specialists. It's also important to note that our anti-bullying coordinator does review those findings as well, so it's been through multiple layers of evaluation and are submitted as found by the investigation. So, a good segue into the month of October. Good evening, everyone. Welcome. October, in addition to being one of my favorite months of the year, and the month where two of my children were born, it's also a very important month for our schools. A lot of different observances occur over the course of the month of October. October is National Bullying Prevention Month. There is the Week of Respect, as well as New Jersey School Violence Awareness Week, Red Ribbon Week. And so, there are quite a number of activities. I have a long list of them in which the schools engage to recognize and to observe these weeks. But just to kind of a few that I thought I would mention, I should probably put my glasses in. Our mentors at the high school are quite involved in these weeks, visiting and conducting classroom discussions in groups, differentiating between conflicts and bullying. We have teen pep members. The high school deliver daily readings on the loudspeaker on issues of violence and teen dating. A number of different assemblies, including a ninth-grade assembly, bullying assembly on conflict resolution, and an assembly for 10th graders on the dangers of substance abuse. So, there are quite a number of activities going. I had the privilege of attending Kelly School's kickoff for their PBSIS program or Positive Behavior Supports in Schools program, and it was great. Buzz Lightyear visited, which the kids enjoyed. I kind of enjoyed it, too. Is that bad to say? And, but all kidding aside, you know, it was great. The kids engaged in games, but all focusing on the ideas of respect, responsibility, and safety. As you know, one of the board goals, one of the district goals that was set this year is for social-emotional learning and a focus on school environment and school culture, you know, which just really begins with, and of course, if anyone was on social media, you saw my tweet this morning, and it really is about just kind of showing and spreading love and kindness, and it really just starts with every individual. And certainly, as the superintendent and administrative team, it's kind of what we try and model, and certainly, our teachers are doing on a daily basis, and our kids, right? And I think you spoke to it, our student liaisons, in terms of how we're really exemplars for other schools in terms of the way we embrace our diversity and have it a strength for us. Just a quick, one quick program, which I would like to plug, I really can't emphasize how great a program it is and how valuable it could be for parents, is that on Thursday, October 24th, Roosevelt Middle School Auditorium, a program called Raising Resilient Teens in Challenging Times. There'll be further advertisements for that, but certainly encourage parents to come out for that and learn. So, that is my report for this evening.
All right. Thank you very much. Up next, questions from the public on agenda items only. If you have a question or comment on anything on the agenda, you can come up. You'll have three minutes. Just let us know your name. And seeing none, we'll move on. All right. Personnel, items one through five. May I have a motion?
I'll motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Page five, letter F on personnel. We're approving an academic literacy learning position for Washington. Will there be a similar position for Hazel? And if not, will this person be a shared person between both Title I schools, as this is being paid for by Title I funds?
The program will be open to parents from both schools, and parents that qualify. The site is at Washington School, and the funding only really allowed for one site at this time. But if we notice that we have, you know, significant interest where we could sustain programs, independent programs for both schools, it's something that we could look at in our future budgeting with the ESSA grant.
Okay. So then, there will be PR to let Hazel parents know that they can go to Washington then?
Yes, ma'am.
And messages home in both English, Spanish, and hopefully Creole?
I can only speak for English and Spanish, but we can, I'm sure we can arrange for Creole as well.
Yeah, Hazel has a significant Creole population.
Duly noted. Thank you.
Mr. D'Amendis?
That's it for me. Thank you so much.
Mr. Calabano, let's vote.
Mrs. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Triggs Scales?
Yes.
Vice President Mordecai?
Yes.
President Alper?
Yes. All right, next, curriculum and instruction, items one through eight. May I have a motion?
So moved.
All right. Any discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
Did you say yes?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Okay.
Attachment three, Professional Development Day. Now, I noticed that you have an outdoor murals item there. We have had several alumni, who are art majors, who are doing very, very well, and one in particular comes to mind. He, I think he just did an exhibit about a week ago in New York, Mrs. Minton's son, and he is doing amazing. If you go through South Orange Maplewood, Newark, a lot of the brand-new murals has been done by one of our alumni. Is it possible to invite him, or another alumni, doesn't have to be him, to come and help out on Professional Day? He even has, like, some little one-minute videos on Facebook where he's actually doing the murals live, and it's amazing.
Sure.
And he learned a lot of that here. I mean, of course, he had natural talent, but...
Sure. That's fantastic. If you could forward the name?
I sure will.
And perhaps even moving forward, we could invite this person in to actually, to also teach it, so, or come into our classes and our classes and speak to our students. So, yeah, great suggestion.
Great mentorship.
Absolutely. Thank you.
A couple others. On attachment four, I noticed that there's a cybersecurity online program, and that reminded me during our security audit, we talked about cybersecurity, and I was wondering where we are in that process.
Sure. Mr. Santiago spoke to it superficially during his technology presentation. I've had a number of conversations with him about that. This professional development, which is for both him and a recently hired network administrator, kind of will go a long way for that. But what I could do is I could ask Mr. Santiago for a memo to update you on that.
On that, I'm sorry.
Are you done, Ms. Mordecai?
No, I'm actually not done. About a week or two ago, we, I had asked about this, and I just wanted to find out if there's an update. When you look at the school report card for the high school, it says 0% for our certificates. And now, I see on attachment number five, the Family Career Community Leaders of America. And so, that reminded me, I know that our students are getting Cisco certifications and things like that. Is it a matter of reporting, and have we been able to figure out why we're not rated higher for career learning, certified career learning?
Sure. I had referred that matter to Ms. D'Amendis, our Assistant Superintendent for Correction, and she in turn conferred with Ms. Mullin about that, our supervisor, and they are in the process of making inquiries with the state as to understand why it was a zero, when it should, you know, it should be reflective of those programs. So, as soon as we have information from the state, we can report out on that. But we are currently inquiring with the state as to the reason for the discrepancy.
Because on our end, we have reported positive numbers, right?
Correct.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, you know, what happened there? No?
We are as well, but, yeah.
Yeah, it's something to figure out, because, of course, anybody who's Googling West Orange thinking about buying a house or thinking about what's going on at the high school, and they see a zero for career certifications, when we know we have them.
Right.
We definitely have them.
So, it's puzzling. And my last question in the curriculum is, on page two, Driver Theory 10, I know we talked about it briefly last week, but I just wanted to find out if there's any further feedback. So, we did Driver Theory 10 in West Orange, and I noticed, and some of the audience may notice that as well, anywhere you're driving in New Jersey, or actually across the country, there's always a sign for somebody who needs a commercial driver's license, somebody needs a driver. And I was wondering if we ever thought about expanding our Driver Theory 10 program to maybe Driver Theory 11 or 12? And I think Ms. D'Amendis had some input saying that maybe we can do the writing portion only, and then a student who wants to be a commercial driver when they leave the high school can finish the rest outside. Just wondering where you are with that.
Yeah, it's, I know Ms. D'Amendis has been exploring it, has done some previous research into it. The challenge is that really, within the hours that we're able to dedicate, we're really only able to advance students through the written portion of the certification process, which would leave them additional hours and practical hours that would need to be done once they've left here. So, it's not really feasible for them to obtain, and I think there's an age requirement as well. They need to be 18. So, well, many of them might be when they graduate. So, there are a couple of kind of circumstantial obstacles to them obtaining the certification by the time they graduate, but we are exploring and certainly open to giving them the opportunity. That's something that we can consider, you know, with this, you know, in updating our program of studies, our course offering book, to potentially include a new course that would do that. But I know Ms. D'Amendis is exploring that presently.
It's 18 for the drivers, but they can get a learner's permit, but they can do the written part here, and they don't have to be 18 for the written part?
Correct.
Okay. Just want to clarify. Thank you.
All right. Were there questions on that, Sanai?
Yes, I don't, I don't have very many, just a couple of clarifying questions. On attachment six, the curriculum writing. So, the hours vary from 10 up through 60. So, should I assume that that's where we're developing curriculum versus modifying curriculum?
Do you want to address that, Ms. D'Amendis?
Good evening. There are different hours assigned. If you're writing a curriculum new, then that's generally 60 hours. If you are revising a curriculum, then that's generally 30 hours. If you see 10 hours, that might be that we're infusing differentiation strategies, so the special education team might be coming behind the curriculum to say, "Now, we're looking at differentiating each unit of study specifically to assist and support our students with need." And then, you may see that for ESL as well.
Okay. I was right.
Yes.
My assumption, just wanted to clarify. And I also just wanted to make a commendation. It's wonderful to see how many of our professional staff members are actually going to be presenters for PD deck.
Yep.
And it's a beautiful thing because they get to teach their peers or share with their peers, and it's utilizing the skills and talents of our staff. So, I just wanted to commend your department and Dr. Cascon for that move. I think that's all I have. Oh, just one more question about the ESL Homework Club and the grants, two different grants, both for ESL, one at Hazel, we're doing Title IV-A, and Washington III. And so, I just want a clarification on that. Dr. Cascon?
Sure. Basically, what you have here is a kind of a collaborative effort between our supervisor of ESL, Mr. Plata, and the Director of Basic Skills Intervention Services, Ms. Granato, essentially sharing resources. Mr. Plata, with his budget, with the grant, was not able to offer the ESL program in both schools, so under the parameters of the grant, Ms. Granato was able to allocate some of the funds from a different title within the grant to fund the program so it could be run in both schools.
Okay. Is there a maximum number of students that can be serviced, or is it on an as-needed basis?
I don't think so. I think typically, you know, just in my experience with organizing these things, the enrollment has never really exceeded or become unmanageable. But of course, that's something that, you know, we can evaluate in terms of the enrollment and the staff as to whether, you know, it's adequate.
Great. We'd just like to know later on how many students actually avail themselves. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you.
All right. Anything from you guys?
Yes. Cheryl, do you want to go next? All right. Couple of questions. First, in regard to the cybersecurity, while I appreciate that we're continuing to provide professional development in that area, we had previously discussed looking at, and I don't know if it can still be done through Homeland Security, it sounds like that was a long process to just wait before they were available, but can we do a cybersecurity audit by an experienced firm that's already addressed cybersecurity issues? Especially since cybersecurity also impacts physical security. Anytime you have a computer chip that's turning, that's determining whether something locks, turns on or off, it means that cybersecurity compromise could compromise physical security in addition to all the identification and personal information for parents, students, and teachers. So, I think it would be worth looking at. I know at school boards workshop, there'll be a couple of companies that are presenting. If we could at least look at what cybersecurity audit would cost, what it would entail by somebody who's actually done this before and intervened in a situation.
I think it makes good sense. Certainly, talk to Mr. Santiago about it and kind of see where they are presently. I know that he'll be down there as well, so I think it makes good sense.
Okay, thank you. For, in general, and we touched upon this, for CTE, for Career and Technical Education, are we going to get a comprehensive report on the number of certifications and what's happened with placement in general?
So, just to clarify, so the first piece, I think, is directly related to Mrs. Mordecai's question?
Yes.
And then, the second piece relative to a report. Just elaborate for me a little bit.
It's more about conversion to hire. Since we are getting Kevin Kidd certified, including in some very, the highest level certification, I believe, at that, for what they're doing for automotive and a number of areas, one, who and how many? And two, what is the conversion to hire upon graduation?
Got you.
With any certification, or when you're going directly from school to work, you sort of, conversion to hire is a key statistic for success.
It's a good question, and it's data I would like to see myself, so I appreciate that.
Okay. Three, and I don't remember whether this was in New Jersey or New York, but there was news about a new certification available that's being recommended for teachers, guidance counselors, et cetera, regarding, it was a mental health first aid certification whereby, and it was recognizing an issue that I've actually brought up before, where we'll do some basic PD on suicide prevention, but our kids are often experiencing a full range of challenges before they get to suicidal ideation, particularly in regard to anxiety and depression. And our teachers, and I don't want to go at length about this, while they have the best of intentions, are often not equipped with the professional development to really identify and address those needs early on, to be able to bring in SAT counselors or special services, et cetera, and do early intervention. And especially what it directly affects a kid's academic performance, social, emotional, all that.
Yeah, I mean, I think it speaks to perhaps the need for a kind of a more deliberate, cogent, and strategic approach to how we're training all staff members that work with kids about just mental health issues in general, recognizing them, identifying them, you know, and then the process by which they're reported and to whom that's most appropriate. So, I do know that, just that I will be following up the next week or two on the guidance audit because, you know, we've been discussing that, and so I have some information for that for you.
Yes, excellent.
And I do know that the guidance department is engaging some PD in November. But I think it's a good point, and I think it's something that's worth focusing on a little bit more cogently. So, we'll look into that.
And we've actually, in regard to curriculum writing, we've approved a number of rounds of curriculum, of PD and actual curriculum writing assignments over the past couple of years. It's on multiple agendas. So, it means that every time a curriculum writing is occurring, because while we have a five-year cycle for curriculum, the truth is that it's an evolutionary cycle. It's not, we do it one year, and five years later, we decide, reevaluate. There's a, you know, ongoing reevaluation, and we've been assigning people to writing assignments, and that means the curriculum is changing as it goes along. So, just wanted, two things. One, when will we be receiving updated presentations on curricula? Because I know that you had originally planned to provide us with some sort of data review that then would lead into the curriculum reviews, we show how the curriculum is addressing the needs that were depicted by the data. So, one, when will we be able to actually see the data? And two, when are we going to begin to actually review curricula?
Sure. So, just for the record, we had originally intended to present the district assessment report at this meeting, but recognizing that we had a little bit more time under state guidelines, which would put us in early November, Ms. D'Amendis and I decided to kind of collaborate on that presentation and do it at the second meeting in October. And at that meeting, we'll not only present the data in kind of, we will not present the data in a vacuum, but we'll use it as an opportunity to specifically kind of draw connections to our mathematics and our ALA curriculum and how that data is kind of informing and driving our initiatives and our planning. Further core curriculum presentations will be done in November, so, you know, we could potentially do two per meeting, though I think... So, you know, we could potentially do two per meeting, though I think that that would be a heavy lift.
Yeah.
You know, so, but we're looking specifically at social studies first and science second, because I know a board member, Mordecai, had indicated looking for an update on NGSS. So we could do social studies and science in November, and that would at least take care of our four core areas.
Okay, so the ELA would occur as, and math occurs part of the, in relation to the district assessment report.
Yeah, well, I think knowing, knowing, understanding the board's interest in having kind of a clear perspective on the curricular initiatives, you know, we would put a critical eye not only on drawing connections to the data, but also probably providing a little bit more information relative to the curriculum cycle and the initiatives that are kind of underway, those that have been approved more recently, changes, and those curriculum that are on, on target to be revised this year.
Okay, well, one thing I will say, with math, we've actually received regular curriculum presentations and updates, followed by board adoption, 2014, 2015, 16, 17, 18, and 19. Sometimes in various parts, like earlier this year, of course, approving the new six-to-eight instructional program. But we've been updated on the pathways, on the math pathways, and revisions in the curricula for greater emphasis on algebra earlier, for six-to-12 many times. The key gap has been, we haven't had a real presentation on thorough presentation, and it was a great presentation when it was done, on K5 since about 2017. And there the, we actually received, we had sample, what a sample lesson may look like to address, we had what the sample parent communications looked like and all that stuff. So if we could get an update on that, that would be great. I know, certainly. On ELA, we received presentations on six-twelve in January, March, and related to the Curriculum Committee findings by June. And for ELA K5, we received presentations from the committee, Curriculum Committee as well, at the same time. And I see that we have ELA K5 curriculum writing assignments here. So I'm not sure, since that's kind of a work in progress, how that's going to look, but it would be great to understand in our new supervisor, what that vision is and how it's addressing some of the issues that we've raised before. And last, actually being able to adopt the curriculum. Because by law, we're supposed to do a roll call vote to adopt. We had these presentations, but we never actually adopted ELA K5 or the changes in K5, because we're supposed to adopt changes in programs, ELA K5 or six-twelve changes.
Let me just touch upon the last statement, and then I'll kind of circle back. I would agree with you on four or five. I would state for the record that the K3 English Language Arts curriculum was actually, in fact, approved at the June 3, 2019 meeting last year, and I think the board motions will reflect that. But four and five is, has not been adopted, is being revised this year for adoption. You know, and that's, you know, if you were to refer to the, the June 3, 2019 agenda and attachments, you'll see that K3 was in fa, ELA was in fact adopted by the board at that meeting.
K3, and there were changes since. The Curriculum Committee was a very comprehensive, I thought you said in 2018?
No, 2019.
Um, we had to look at, at what was actually, we had to look back at that and what was actually formally voted on.
Yeah.
The Curriculum Committee findings were still preliminary, but we don't have to have that conversation there, but we need to look back at that. And the last thing is, for social studies, having been to parent, back to school night as a parent, and now having heard from other parents, really want to understand when we do that presentation, that a major concern. And that is, while we certainly want to trust the direction of the curriculum, currently, and I'll speak for initially, Social Studies Eight, both the general course and the honors course, they're covering three thousand to five thousand years of history in one year. They're going from ancient times to the, through ancient to medieval, to Renaissance, early modern, and the Age of Discovery. Now, you know, I'm a historian. The toughest history course I ever had at Yale, the most accelerated ever, covered a century a week. We're covering a century every couple of days. And that's, that's issue number one. Issue number two is, the teachers are giving examples to the parents of the types of exercises and things that they're doing. And now seeing that in concrete form, because we weren't really given those samples before, it appears to be a lot of, and I understand this is in keeping with the state standards, critical thinking exercises. And they're critical thinking exercises, but if you're covering five thousand years in one year of school, how much are they actually learning about the lessons of the events of history, continuity of history, the cultures, the, 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 the major players, the, and cause and effect and consequences? That's a major concern. So I look forward to that being addressed in the social studies presentation, because five thousand years in one year for an adult, let alone for a middle school eighth grader, is a tremendous amount of ground to cover. This has also been raised by other parents with me.
Yeah, so just, just a couple of thoughts on that. I think that most social studies teachers would agree with you. I think one of the, one of the challenges, and I just want to note that, that the, the middle school social studies curriculum, those courses which cover ancient civilization to Renaissance, you know, they are board-approved curriculum, they were approved recently. That doesn't necessarily mean that Mr. Robertson's points are not valid, because I, as a historian, as a teacher myself, I would tend to agree with him. Social studies teachers have a heavy lift, because they take their cue from the state standards, and that's what the state standards still oblige social studies teachers to teach. And so I think in, in modern social studies instruction, we're still kind of walking that balance and trying to find that right balance between the facts, the information, along with kind of those bigger ideas. I, I haven't seen enough social studies instruction, I haven't been in enough social studies classrooms to feel comfortable making an assessment as to the extent to which that instruction is not aligned with best practice. But I think, I think the idea, the question for consideration is a good driving question for social studies supervisor, for social studies teachers to keep in mind. And at a certain point in time, do we have, do we have, do we have an obligation to really take a more enlightened, no pun intended, approach to the way we design social studies curriculum than just simply what the state tells us? And say, you know what, state? We get it, but this is not a service to our kids. And ultimately, we have to be a little bit more enlightened in the way we're approaching the curriculum writing. So I appreciate the point of view, and I think in the board presentation, we can certainly speak to that.
And I appreciate your appreciation. I, I do want to note one thing, when the board adopted the curricula, the detailed presentation that's now at the website was not presented to us, nor was it the attachment. We were given something that was very top line. I actually looked back at my, my binder from that day. So it would be, we, you know, the board always likes to trust, and, but once, but now seeing this concretely being rolled out, it, it's become a concern, number one. Number two, I'd ask you to reexamine process. The process used to be with curriculum, that it wasn't just an attachment or a link to, you know, a Google Drive. The board was formally presented in open public meeting, and then in the second meeting, where it may be an attachment, it was then, there was further discussion followed by adoption, or any changes recommended, et cetera. And I think that that allows two things. One, the public to fully see that presentation, and parents to be able to respond to it, some of whom are educators themselves. And two, it ensures that the board really, fully understands the full impact of that curricula, has time to fully deliberate on it, and then adopt it at the following meeting. So as a matter of process, I would just explore that.
That's fair, thank you.
Thank you. So mental health, we did that. I'm good, thank you very much.
If I may, I just wanted to piggyback on one thing Mark said. School boards, I attended the Board of Directors meeting last weekend, and School Boards has just completed the mental health study they've been doing for the last couple of years. So when you go down to the workshop this year, you'll probably have a bunch of courses. They have seventy-one recommendations for districts. So that will be coming out in a more user-friendly format soon. But it's, it's a huge binder. I haven't even gotten to finish reading it as yet, but that will be coming, Mr. Robertson, so you'll be happy to learn all about mental health and all that great stuff.
Looking forward to what they're teaching, yes.
All right. Previously on Board of Education, we were going to talk on CNI items one through eight. I don't, did you have something as well?
Oh, no, I was, thanks Scott and John for answering all my questions prior to the meeting.
Bingo.
So thank you for answering.
All right. Yeah.
Is Sparkle here?
Yes.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Triggs Scales?
Yes.
Vice President Mordecai?
Yes.
President Alper? Yes, and I believe the student liaison did something, sorry.
Yes, so I had a question regarding the discussion on driver's ed theory. So I thought it was interesting to talk about extending the curriculum beyond 10th grade when students pass the written test. One of the discussions we actually talked about at the New Jersey Student Council's Conference was discussions around preventing drunk drive, drunk-driving crashes, specifically around prom. Many schools actually, on the day of prom, they encourage students to attend seminars or discussions that deter them from any reckless decisions behind the wheels on the night of prom. And the, from the schools I've talked to, they talked about how this has led to a drastic reduction of car crashes within their communities. So in terms of extending driver's ed theories, not just the courses, but its implications, would something like this be considered to, especially around prom and seniors, to really stress the emphasis of safe driving and safe decisions on nights like that?
One hundred percent, you know, and I think that, you know, this is, I think, a, a good, it's a good example, I think, of a way which, as a student liaisons, you know, you can kind of push back into the building and advocate for that with, you know, the building principal with, with Ms. Butler, but certainly from a superintendent's perspective, I think it's fantastic, you know, and, you know, really timely. So I would, you know, throw my full support behind it.
Great, thank you Darlene, that was a great idea.
That was great.
May I just add something, a, a personal note, and so, a hundred percent. I spent the night through the next day of my graduation night under the Pulaski Skyway.
Wow.
And there was no drunk driving, but we were turning that curve, and a milk truck, you don't know about milk trucks, because that's how long ago this was, but had his high beams on and blinded this brand-new driver, seventeen-years-old, and we went over the divider, almost flipped over.
Oh, wow.
And so as you're talking, Darlene, I'm sitting here reliving that, and I think that's an excellent, excellent idea.
Thank you.
And I just want to say, because you, the two of you left before the board had an opportunity to make comments last week. I am so looking forward to listening to the two of you and learning from the two of you. You're, you're special, you're spectacular, and just fine representatives of West Orange High School, and so we couldn't be prouder of you.
Thank you.
So thank you.
And I'd like to add one more comment. I appreciate your appreciation as well.
[laughing]
We, I was actually the president of the Nikhil Badlani Youth Advisory Board last year.
Right.
We were actually the champion school, so rated top three in the schools for promoting safe driving efforts. Because of this, we won a driving simulator for the West Orange High School, and we are actually working with the New Jersey Brain Alliance and, and discussing the idea of creating like a prom initiative, you know, promoting the idea of safe driving and safe decisions the night before prom during the most kind of influential time. They were actually offering, to bring a speaker here for free, because we did win the champion schools things, so we could work with the, actually, New Jersey Brain Alliance Association if we were considering to do that.
Phenomenal, that's great.
Great.
Beautiful.
Thank you. All right, next up, finance, Special Services one through two, and Business Office items one through seven. May I have a motion?
So most?
I'll second.
All right, any discussion?
Yes. Sorry. Okay, so on, on the bills list, we are approving Bayarder nurses, and I just want to follow up on, I believe a couple of board members had supported me in this. We talked about when we approved the nurses' plan.
Yes.
Increasing the number of nurses, particularly at the high school where we have twenty-two-hundred students and two nurses. And even though we have someone that we bring in for one-to-one reasons for spec-ed kids or for trips, that ratio is still pretty bad. It's not a state requirement, but it is a recommendation that the ratio be one to every seven-hundred-and-fifty students, and we do not meet that ratio. So just wanted to know if, if there's room in the budget to look at that, or if that's something, a budgetary item for next year, and what do you feel about that?
I agree.
Next is page eleven, Essex Regional Education Services Commission, my, my pet project for the last year. We are paying them a hundred and fourteen thousand, seven-hundred-and-seven dollars, and we do not have a seat at the table. Several years ago, I believe Mrs. Lab was the liaison to that organization. As twenty percent of our students are spec-ed and we use their services regularly, I, I think we should really advocate for a seat at their table. I know you're going to look into that as well. And my last question is, Betty Madalena School, the bottom of page thirty-four, we are paying for the, it says Bureau of Fire Code Enforcement. As a tenant in that building, are we responsible for the fire code enforcement for that school? It's a small amount, it's a hundred and eight dollars, but I just wanted to make sure if, according to our lease, if we are responsible for the fire code as a tenant.
I'll check into that, that could be a wrong account number. So I'll double-check that tomorrow, I'll let you know.
Okay, it says State of New Jersey Bureau of Fire Code Enforcement.
I would think not, but let me check.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't think as a tenant, we would be responsible for that.
Right.
And that, that's a little scary, because we're not in the building every day to make sure that we're fire code compliant, or do we have, nor do we have access to their equipment to make sure that that's happening.
So if it's, if it's wrong account number, I can fix the account number and then send the check out. And if it shouldn't be paid at all, I'll just void it out, and you'll see the void on the next bills list.
Okay, wonderful, thank you.
Anything else? All right, Mr. Calavano.
Mrs. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Triggs Scales?
Yes.
Vice President Mordecai?
Yes.
President Alper?
Yes. Okay, reports, item one, may I have a motion?
I'll, I'll second.
All right, any discussion? All right, Mr. Calavano. Mrs. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Triggs Scales?
Yes.
Vice President Mordecai?
Yes.
President Alper? Yes. Okay, a public comment, if you'd like to come up and speak on any topic at all, come on up, let us know your name and address, you'll have three minutes on the clock.
Good evening, my name is Guan Wu, I brought with me Justice, my eighth grader at Liberty Middle School. She's wearing a shirt, if you could please show.
Hi, Mom.
On Wednesday, September twenty-fifth, she was issued a dress code violation for the shirt. She's was taken, or following her second period, she was taken out. She was very compliant with Ms. Brotsman. She, she basically just waited because I was in class, then I couldn't be reached, so I couldn't bring her a change of clothes. She ultimately missed her entire third-period class. Afterwards, I finished up school, I came to her school, I spoke with Ms. Brotsman and Principal Klempt. They cited that her shirt was in violation of the sixth and seventh dress code bullet points. The sixth one is articles of clothing that contain references to illegal substances, sexual innuendos, inappropriate language, and pictures, sayings, or symbols that show affiliation to hate groups, gangs, or demeaning messages directed towards any individual group or association. I contested that it wasn't derogatory. Principal Klempt also said that it was the seventh bullet point, which is any accessory that can be dangerous or, and/or disruptive to the learning environment. She had personally indicated to me through text that she felt singled out. She felt that it was a staff member who had actually made the report. Mr. Klempt told me that he was looking out for her best interest, because her shirt says lesbians on it, he didn't want her targeted, but she felt like she was discriminated. They told me to come talk to the board, determine whether it was an offense, but I happened to have one of her friends that goes to Roosevelt wear the same shirt on Wednesday, October 2nd. She had no problems. Coincidentally, it was the same day that Roosevelt held a LGBTQ assembly for the eighth graders, which was presented by the Garden State Equality. And my issue is, how is this incident not perpetuating discrimination and intolerance? Why is there such a... Why is there such a large distinction between the two middle schools because they are both 7th and 8th graders in both schools? How does, basically, she portrayed, she felt that it was victim blaming, you know, how does that help her feel safe at school? And what type of disciplinary actions can be proposed against the school or staff?
Thank you.
Hi, Jennifer Beazer, 82 Lawrence Avenue. I just wanted to let everybody know that a week from tonight, October 14th, West Orange Cares About Schools and the WOCE PAC are hosting a meet-and-greet with our Board of Ed candidates, and all three of our candidates will be present. It's from 6:30 to 8:30 at the Total Wine Store at Essex Green, 495 Prospect Avenue. And it's just a time for people to come together, have conversations, chat with the candidates in a, in an informal way and get to know them in advance of the election. And everyone's invited, and we hope to see a lot of you there. Second, I just wanted to jump on your enlightened approach to social studies because just as a parent, understanding that this is sort of dictated by the state to a certain extent, I have felt like my kids have spent years and years and years studying American history, specifically Revolutionary Period American history, and precious little time learning about the broader history of the world, or even modern history of other countries. And yes, I want them to meet the state's standards, but I want them to leave here being educated people, and I would love to see a more enlightened approach. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening, Jennifer Tunnycliff, 8 Hartshorn Terrace. In order to give you full transparency, I'm also one of the candidates for the Board of Education. I had a couple of questions as I was thinking about the referendum, and I know we're going to be getting a presentation from the architects in the next meeting or two. But I had a couple of questions that I was thinking about, just to bring it out in the open and have some more transparency around this issue. My first question was, or my first series of questions is, what is our rating? Is it an A, is it a B, and when was the last time we did a refinance? And since the rates are so good right now, is it possible to do a refinance of the current debt service, that we could pay that down a little bit more, or refinance it at a better interest rate to relieve some of the tax burden if we're going to look at another referendum for the taxpayers? Secondly, I think a couple of meetings ago, we were given the presentation about the debt service and what the different, there were four different ones that were listed, and as I went through my notes, I didn't see that the ESIP was listed in that debt service. Is that not included in current debt service? And I just wanted to understand that, so if somebody could clarify that for me, I'd appreciate it, and how much is left on the ESIP debt. And then also, I wanted to know if there's a scope of work of all of the projects that were listed that previously, that shows what was done and sort of the timeline on that, like, when it was done, so that as we get this architect presentation that's coming up, that we have something to compare it to, so that we're knowing, okay, this was done, this hasn't been done, this is what's going to be done, and here are the priorities, as they said. So I'd be interested in learning at that, and I imagine a lot of the other public folks would be interested as well. And finally, another question about the ESIP. I understand that Honeywell was supposed to come back in and do a presentation after all of the lighting was put in, and we were supposed to get a presentation about the savings that we had, and I don't recall that that was ever done. Admittedly, I have not been to every single board meeting, so it may have been done, and I may just be out of the loop, but I wanted to see if that was done, and if it hasn't, when will we be scheduling that? So that's all, thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone further? All right, seeing none. Dr. Cascone, you want to kick it off?
Yeah, I just, a couple of things. First, we recently had a couple of, of, not new events, but events that have not taken place for some time at West Orange High School. The first was, was a bonfire, a spirit bonfire, and the second was a homecoming dance. You know, there was a lot of time and energy that went into planning those events. You know, we had the football and the cheerleading boosters that, you know, that really collaborated with the school. Was really proud to see the way volunteers stepped up for both events, you know, and dedicated their time to ensure that we were able to put those events on. So just wanted to kind of thank all those folks, both, you know, from our parent community and also from our, within our school community, that participated in that. I'd also like to, you know, wish all of our community members who have been celebrating Jewish holidays, including Yom Kippur, which is on Wednesday, a blessed holiday, safe holiday, as you know, where our schools will be closed on Wednesday, so we wish them all the best. And just to note that, you know, I have made it clear to our administrative team to be mindful of students who are celebrating that holiday in terms of work requirements the following day, and that they, they should have extensions on that time. So just want to make that clear to the community, that that's been clarified and is the expectation. So again, we wish them the very best for a blessed and safe holiday.
And anything on?
You're going to address the?
Thank you.
Well, yes, so in terms of the commentary relative to the discipline issue, this is the first that I've heard of it. You know, did not come to, you know, to my level, it went from the building principal right to the board. So what I would say is, not having had any knowledge of it prior to now, you know, just from a human standpoint, I would say, you know, certainly if, if the young lady, I don't see where she is, hello, Justice, certainly if Justice, you know, encountered any kind of, you know, just kind of negative feelings as a result of the incident, you know, that's unfortunate, apologize for that, you know, we want all our kids to feel good and safe and comfortable. You know, strictly from a, you know, from a policy, illegal, and a procedural standpoint, I don't think it would be prudent for me to comment on it now, not having had any knowledge of the proceeding, so I promise you that I will look into it, at the facts, at the administrative rationale, and, you know, we'll report back to the board on that.
And Mr. Calavano, do you have anything on the referendum topics?
Sure, if I had to guess about the rating, I believe we're double-A 2, but I'll double-check that. Refinancing, you never have to worry about us forgetting to refinance the debt, because there are people out there, financial advisors, looking at our information and knocking on my door, hey, it's time to refinance, but we also have a financial advisor, so we just asked him recently, and the two outstanding bonds that we have, they're not callable yet, so we wouldn't be able to refund them, or refinance them anyway. ESIP, we, I left ESIP out of the debt service because ESIP is part of the general fund budget. So when the board asked for the debt service fund obligations, I provided that information to the board. There was several board members that requested ESIP to be part of the listing, so I have included that now in the listing for total debt. Scope of work for the last, I think I can get something together for the last 10 years from the Director of Buildings and Grounds, and I'll share that out to the community and the board. And the last question regarding ESIP, Honeywell did come back to the board to do their presentation, and they were able to verify the first-year savings. We had a choice at that time to, I believe, to pay additional $20,000 to verify year two, and we chose at that point not to move ahead with the $20,000.
Just from my perspective, obviously, you know, I'm looking forward to hearing exactly what's going on there with the, with that particular incident, because, yeah, you know, nobody should be made to feel that way, obviously, and we'll figure out what's going on on a policy level there. Ms. Beazer, thank you for the meet-and-greet plug, and, you know, personally, I remember myself, you know, history class, I feel like, with the exception of the 4th grade, New Jersey history year, that every year it felt like, and I'm sure it wasn't, but as a kid, every year it felt like, you started with the Revolution, you maybe got to World War II, the books didn't go much further anyway, and then the next year you'd do the same thing all over again, so, yeah. And I think that's it from my perspective. Next board meeting will be, oh, sorry, board comments, board comments, yes, sorry, sorry.
Good try, good try.
Skip right over it, and I've got things too. Ms. Trig Scales?
And I concur about the social studies and the history. And one of the things I'd like to see is possibly in 3rd grade that our youngsters are learning about West Orange. I think it's really, really important that as we move at the younger grades, kindergarten, 1st grade, 2nd grade, you know, you're talking about family, and then you're talking about community, and as we move out, I think it starts with me, me, myself, and I, so you're learning about yourself, and then you're learning about family, and then community. I think we need to spend some time before we get to 4th grade, learning about New Jersey, that our kids here in West Orange learn about the rich, rich history, right here in our own hometown. So I'd like to see if we could somehow supplement that. That's just a personal request, not a board request. That's a, that's a Terry request.
I think we already have that, is it 3rd grade? And then they go to the mayor's office as well as a part of it?
But much, much more than that, much, much more. And I'm talking about the Edison, excuse me, I'm talking about the Edison Museum and Glenmont, all of that, and I think our kids need to have the opportunity to do that. And I did share something with Dr. Cascone, now I've forgotten what it was, but I think 4th graders, was it 4th grade, Dr. Cascone? The National Park Service is making available to parents that there's free admission, so it's something like that. Does that sound familiar? I sent that to you, and you said awesome.
Say it again?
The National Park Service is, yes, see?
That's right, and I did forward that to all the principals.
Very good.
I thought that was tremendous.
Yes, yes. So, but back to West Orange, so I hope that that's something that we can look into. I wanted to, few things have already been talked about. I recently attended two New Jersey School Boards workshops, and one was on social, emotional learning, and I just handed Dr. Cascone the task force's report. And as Mrs. Mordecai said, yes, there are 71 recommendations in there that school districts can look at, but there are four basic things that they talk about. One is to invite experts, and don't think that we have all the answers. Number two, to conduct climate surveys, to find out where the kids are, what they're thinking, what we need to do better. Third is to collaborate with other districts, lots of other districts have had experiences that go beyond ours, and we don't need to reinvent the wheel, but oftentimes to share. And then the fourth is to create a community response team, and I'm not sure, do we have one of those, Ms. Mordecai? Okay. So those were the four areas. The other workshop I went to was Sustainable Jersey, and Ms. Mordecai has been talking about that for a while, and I didn't know what all the details were, but as Ms. Mordecai leaves the board, I promise I will sustain the sustainability effort here in, in West Orange. And I know that just as schools can win blue ribbon, national blue ribbon awards, there are national green ribbon awards. It would be wonderful to have one of our schools, two of our schools here in West Orange, apply and actually be awarded a green ribbon. I think, I think that's it. Yes, that's it, so thank you very much.
All right, Ms. Mordecai?
Thank you, I do appreciate that. I have been talking about sustainability from the entire time I'm on the board, and actually learned about it from a parent. Washington School was the green school in West Orange, and it started at the 1st and the 5th grade in Washington School, and then on to Edison. And we did apply for the green ribbon for Liberty, but we were not successful, and that committee kind of died out, and not everybody had any interest in it anymore, but Terry's here to help me get it back.
I meant to mention, I meant to mention that there are grants available due October 31st. And I also have given Dr. Cascone two folders, so he can share those, so, since we're in this grant-winning mode.
Those are those lengthy emails I email to the board all the time, Sustainable Jersey for Schools, there are grants every month. And I attended the Board of Directors' meeting last weekend, and during that meeting, they announced that our, you're going to talk about Future Ready, so I won't steal your thunder. Future Ready, which we've been a part of for the last couple of years, will be morphing into Sustainable Jersey for Schools, so that it's going to be one unit. I don't know how that's going to work, but that's what's going to be happening over the next few months. Couple of things about, we're going to be going to the workshop for all board members in October, and at the Board of Directors' meeting, I found out that there will be 65 credits for facilities managers if our Buildings and Grounds team goes. The legislative update will be on the main stage this year. Every year, there's, there's no room left in any of the classrooms, they keep picking a bigger classroom, so this year will be on the main stage, so everyone can take part in that. There will be 98 teams participating in Steam Tank this year, and one year, West Orange participated, I was hoping that they would again this year, but, yeah. So the Steam Tank, maybe I'll let the student liaisons talk about Steam Tank Challenge, but the Steam Tank they can talk about later. Let's see. School Board is going to be rolling out a new professional development program through Rutgers, and it's going to be Rutgers Continuing Studies Program, Distance Learning. There will, there's 40,000 enrollment credits, 10,000 non-credit courses, and we will pretty soon have access to that. So that's, that's going to be all new for us. Let's see, what else I had? The rest of the stuff I can tell you later, there's a lot of social, emotional learning workshops, there's going to be, yeah, so that's going to be good. The commissioner will also be one of the judges of the Steam Tank Challenge, so that would be great. And that's about it for me. Thank you.
Mr. Robertson?
Without getting into any of the details, I just want to say, Justice, thank you for your courage, and continue to be proud of who you are, because we are proud of who you are. And it was just awesome coming up here, I'm very proud of you. High five? All right.
Very brave.
Yeah, totally. And on these sustainable, the sustainable training, training was actually, to me, one of the most intensive that New Jersey School Boards offers. It was a grueling, all-day, very intensive, but, yeah, to your point, Ms. Trig Scales and Ms. Mordecai, yeah, there are grants every month, there's a lot of resources available. But, Mr., Dr. Cascone, one of the things we need to look at is who are going to be the point people? Right now, there are numerous green projects going on across the district. There are gardens, there are partnerships with the YMCA to do gardens of a variety of types, so there's even some water conservation efforts going on. So we need to, one, document those, and, two, consider how to have point persons in each building, maybe there's a student point person as well as a staff one, so, huh?
We used to.
We used to, I know, I'm saying we don't right now. And so everyone's kind of doing their own thing, and we have a lot of great partnerships in the community for it, but it's pulling that together, because we can get credit for that, we can get awarded for that, it helps us in grant applications to say we're already doing X, Y, and Z, so those are things to look at. Ms. Beazer, well, on the social studies issue, I'm not going to harp on it too long, you already know how I feel. I think, though, we have to find a way to meet state standards, but also meet the educational and enrichment needs of our children, so they actually come away, understand, come away with understanding history and cultures. I think we all pretty much agree on that. The meet-and-greet at Total Wine, that could end up having the best attendance of many of the meet-and-greets, but that, I don't see if I can attend that. The bonfire was an amazing spirit event, and one I hope that we, that our, that West Orange High will take over and, and hold annually. I do want to thank the, the parents who volunteered and the administrators who volunteered. That was a tremendous amount of volunteerism to pull that off, and I was also happy that as a result, it was free, because everybody really pitched in, did their thing, students had an amazing time, parents enjoyed it, everybody enjoyed it, and it was a great way to lead into Homecoming Week. I also want to congratulate Coach Grant, and I really would like to see those athletes would like to see those athletic updates again as a regular thing.
Student liaisons want to throw me some of those.
Well, but, you know, Coach Grant and the football team and the coaching staff, I'm sorry, that was just, they've scored over 120 points in five games. They're, you know, some of these games have entirely blown out the competition. Just want to say how proud I am of the boys, how proud I am of the coaches and how amazing this is. Also want to congratulate folks on the, on our, congratulate Mr. Moore and the administrators at the high school on our AP score performance. And that's something we should actually have and to have a discussion about as part of our board meeting. But I'm glad we got some press on that. And we should probably work on getting more press on that, that is part of our PR. Seeing the patch was great, but that's a great story. It's a great success story. Most people don't realize that we offer over 25 AP courses and now to know that we're actually performing very well in that. And that's also a credit to Ms. DeMendes. I remember that we had some instances where we looked at the score report back in 2017 and there were a number of areas where we had gaps or we needed to improve, including some areas of physics, because there were about three different physics APs and there were a couple other areas too. And it looks like we addressed those and have shown significant improvement there, our computer science AP and a number of others. But that really is a strong, indicates a tremendous strength of our high school and one that more people really need to know about. That's it. Thank you.
Ms. Merklinger?
So just to kind of back up on the West Orange and social studies, I think I'm the only one here who actually attended third grade in West Orange, but, no, well, out, I mean, out of, not currently.
Oh, okay.
But, so I do remember, you know, going to Glenmont, going to the Edison factory, going to visit the mayor's office. I got to see Mayor Spina's office. So, you know, it was, so if, if it's not going on any longer, that's disappointing. I know my own son got to do a lot of that stuff and learn about West Orange and the history of it. So if it's not happening, I would love to see that still happen.
Well, actually, I just want to mention, Dr. Joe found curriculum from many years ago and it has it to share with us. So you're absolutely right. It did happen. We just kind of moved away from it.
Yeah. So if, if that is something, you know, like Terry said, if we moved away from it, I would love to see us bring that back. It was definitely a fun part of growing up here in West Orange. So we'd love to see that back. But I also want to thank our social studies teachers who do put a lot into the curriculum because I know it is a lot of information. It is a lot of work, but it ended up being one of my son's favorite courses through his career in school. And so I just want to thank those teachers because that is a lot of hard work and they do do a lot of projects and fun things that I think a lot of our students do enjoy. So looking forward to seeing the update, but I just want to thank our teachers for the hard work they put into that curriculum right now. I also just, you guys mentioned about the COPS grant, but I think it just speaks to the great relationship that our community has with town, Board of Ed, just everyone being involved, the West Orange Police Department, the Fire Department. So I just want to thank everyone again for their participation in that grant process. I too was at the Bonfire. It was a lot of fun. It was very cold, but the fire was pretty neat. And I do look forward to seeing what events, I think that was a great idea for the cheerleading and football booster clubs to bring that idea to the high school. And I look forward to the high school maybe taking that over as something we do in the future. And speaking of, our football team has their homecoming game this Friday night against East Orange. So I encourage everyone to come out. I think we're crowning our homecoming king and queen. Our boy soccer team, our girl soccer team, the cross country team, they all start at the Essex County Tournament this week. And so hopefully they've done well. They'll be in the semifinals the following weekend or in quarterfinals. Our volleyball and tennis teams are doing well. Our marching band has their invitational this weekend at West Orange High. So come out to the homecoming game Friday night and then come back Saturday for the marching band invitational. I also want to congratulate our valedictorian, salutatorian, Renine. So Annika Fernandez and Brett Zalnson. Congratulations on your accomplishments. That's huge. I also want to point, highlight a student. It was brought to my attention. Emma Kelly, who is one of our Liberty Middle School students, was nominated by her science teacher for a week-long STEM camp through the American Association University of Women. 169 girls were nominated in New Jersey. Only 60 are selected and Emma was one of those students. And so she, they just had, it's a week-long camp at Stockton University. And they just actually had a dinner this past week and where she had to present a book of what she encountered, what she did and her interest in the STEM program. So congratulations to Emma on representing West Orange. And speaking of, you know, community and, you know, working with the police department, Fire Department, Town Council, I also want to thank a lot of our businesses in town. Places like Chipotle, Jersey Mike's, Oak Barrel, they do a lot of fundraising events that benefit our schools. So whether it's PTAs or the booster clubs, they're always willing to host fundraisers. So I just want to thank and give them some props for always supporting our school district. And again, no school on Wednesday.
Great. Liaisons, anything else to report?
I just wanted to comment about, first, as a student who's gone through Liberty Middle School and has gone and entered into high school, I've seen like with the dress code and how it's enforced. I remember mainly in elementary school, I didn't really see much of an issue. Most of the kids weren't really like looking towards their clothes. But once we entered towards middle school, especially Edison and then going into Liberty, teachers started looking more strictly into it. And I feel like, not just me, but I remember when I was running, I got a lot of comments from the other students about how they feel like the dress code is negatively affected, no, pointed towards certain students, students like females and certain issues and like certain kind of hairstyles, like waves and do-rags, that may be unallowed. And they're very like generalized ideas, not ideas, reasons as to why students can't wear things like that, such as like it promotes gang violence. But as a student, I don't see as to how wearing a do-rag does promote gang violence or wearing things like what Justice has worn promotes. Anything other than just teachers pointing it out, I feel like from what she's said, that when the teacher pointed it out, it made more of an issue than when she was there by herself. And so I would raise that there should be a review for middle school and high school dress codes. And on top of that, with the social studies curriculum, if you guys are going to look into and adjust the social studies curriculum, I ask that you guys add, I wouldn't say an elective, but push more for civics in high school and for students exiting the high school because at that point, they are going to be entering as citizens into our community. And they're, they have more rights as adults. They have more rights to vote. They have rights for free speech, rights to a jury. They have rights to know how, for many other things. And it would be very beneficial for students to know how just our society works, especially like court systems and et cetera, et cetera. A third thing with the drivers classes, I think Board Member Mordecai brought it up. If you guys are to look into drivers classes, like extra commercial drivers classes, it should be like, it could be like electives directed for seniors and people who are going to be 18 at the time of the end of that class. So it could be like a half-year course similar to how Drivers Ed is, or a quarter-year course similar to how Drivers Ed is. And it could be an elective that you could take. And students could participate in their senior year. So it's specific for seniors so that they can actually get their certification. And finally, you brought up the steam tank. I actually didn't know about this until a few minutes ago, but after searching it up and after searching through, it's actually a program where the US Army, I'm pretty sure, funds kind of a program where we invent steam inventions such as like science, technology, engineering, art and math inventions. And we bring it up and it's sort of like the entrepreneur show, Shark Tank, in which you, judges are on panel and they judge whether or not they would invest or take away from that and seclude themselves from that project. And it helps students like kind of build like an idea of like just how to better like their environment. And it gives challenges to students and allows them to help just think outside of the box in ways that like classes may not help them or in ways classes don't actually challenge them, such as like ways to go green or ways to, you know, help their environments, not only at school, but also at home. So, thank you.
So I am so happy that a lot of this conversation was geared towards making our town green and promoting sustainability. I would just like to mention that the West Orange High School does have a Fight for Green Club. It was a club that I was a part of, not as committed as I would have wanted to, but I know that last year they were talking about efforts in like creating a compost for the school. And because they're a high school, they did have access to certain grants that are specific to high schools. So being awarded for some of their efforts and getting money to actually implement some of these things. So I would love to go back to the high school, specifically the Fight for Green Club, let them know that they have the support from the board. And from that, hopefully I can gather a report of like recommendations from them because we do have them as a resource. And knowing that they're supported by the board would really be helpful in like promoting their efforts. I would also like to thank Justice again for coming out. I remember being a middle schooler in Liberty and I had my own running and I know that students of my grade did. And back then, like three years ago, we didn't, we weren't empowered to know that we had a voice. And I'm so grateful that you are empowered because this is a valid issue. And I'm grateful that we're in a community where we teach our kids that your problems are valid and you can come directly to us because we're here to serve you. So I'm grateful that you knew that you had us as a resource, that we're here to serve you. And I want you to know that your complaint did not go to blind eyes or deaf ears because I'm here and I'm really like, as a student liaison, I really empathize with your story because we're here talking about how we want our teachers to be resources, to promote mental health, to be allies to our students, but we can't ignore how policies have individuals behind it. And would these individuals come to make space for interpretations? And so as a student, how do you not feel targeted when you have a policy, but there's interpretations within that? How do you not feel targeted when there's inconsistencies with the way you were treated with response in other school? So I do want to urge the board to really consider this because these interpersonal relationships that our students have with our teachers are very important to things such as mental health and the overall environment and climate in our classrooms. So thank you again, Justice.
Thank you.
You two are so impressive. One away every time.
So what do I have? It's been a busy week. Yes.
Thank you.
Really well said. There was the Bonfire. There was the homecoming dance that I think was a really nice success, right? It's, you know, it's great to see these things coming back to West Orange and I'm glad to see the boosters got together and made these things happen for us. Football, fantastic. 42-7 over Livingston. Went to that game and that was, you know, a surprisingly nice day for October, but it was, you know, beautiful to see that win. Today Roosevelt versus Liberty Girl Soccer, managed to get to that game. Dr. Cascone was there for a little bit. You know, high school's going to have some really good freshman players in a couple of years. That was good to watch. And what else did I have? Future Ready Schools, congratulations to Kelly, which becomes our second school to be certified Future Ready. They're going to get certified at a workshop the week of the 21st when we're down there. So that's great. It's been a long process. Ms. Mordecai and I have been on that committee, many, many meetings. But, you know, really hard work being done by Mr. Santiago and everyone at Kelly this year, Edison the year before when they got certified. We just go to some meetings. They're doing the work.
For our meetings.
Yeah, they're, but they're doing the work. Couple things to plug. I think on October 10th at Roosevelt, they're doing a financial aid workshop. They're encouraging parents of even like seventh and eighth graders that it's not too soon to get that, to start learning about that process. I think that's at 6:30 PM. Can double check on that for you. The school play I've been asked to plug, tickets are on sale already, I think, online. And that's October 31st, November 1st and 2nd, all at 7:00 PM. There's no Sunday matinee this year. The play is William Shakespeare's long-lost first play, Abridged. It's not actually Shakespeare. It's funny. It looks pretty exciting. And I think that's all I have. Ms. Berkowitz, if you have a little time and want to tell us what actually is in the third grade curriculum, feel free to come up when we're done. I'd like to know. With that, our next meeting right here, 8:00 PM on October 28th. We'll see you then hopefully. Get home safe. Have a good night. We're adjourned.